For not repeating the comments, we also appreciate that. Welcome.
Thank you. Dave Janza, I am reading a prepared statement for my brother Tom, who's in the hospital and unable to attend tonight's meeting.
Thanks, Dave.
Councilors, Mayor, City Administrators, Tom from Landscapes Unlimited, golfers, and fellow citizens, my goal in crafting this statement is to try to make it easier for you, not more difficult. Please remember, no decision process should be viewed as so sacred that it cannot be questioned. Just because the consequences of voting "no" on this contract might be difficult, that is not a reason to vote "yes." We are here tonight because of specific decisions City Administrators have undertaken over a period of time. Each one alone might not be that significant, but after a series of these decisions, we are far off the beaten path. Number one, City Administrators chose to do an RFP in 2017 without even one year of relevant financial information available to proposers. Number two, in 2016, the city contracted with the National Golf Foundation to advise them on all things golf-related in Sioux Falls. That report states that 2020 would be the best time to get the best results from an RFP process. The National Golf Foundation recommended no major policy changes. They also agreed that the city and any proposers should have a chance to see a few years of post-renovation financial data before responding to an RFP. But City Administrators ignored all this and proceeded. To number three, to address the lack of relevant data, City Administrators moved the RFP process later in the year than desirable. That decision resulted in almost zero leeway in trying to get a contract done by the end of this year. Number four, City Administrators also ignored the National Golf Foundation's advice to resist significant policy changes. Instead, you are here tonight deciding on a contract with a major policy change. Number five, as a result of this, City Administrators were unprepared for the most crucial item, equipment. This is not just important to Dakota Golf, but to all the citizens in this room and throughout Sioux Falls who have a policy change and the taxpayer investment that it is going to require. We're asking $750,000 for all our equipment. The city offered $432,000. Those are the numbers that are on the table. Since City Administrators could not come to terms with me, they would need a Plan B. They explained to us that $743,000 would be required year one. What they failed to reveal is that additional $255,000 maintenance equipment lease payments are required in years two, three, four, and five. When you add these payments to the $743,000 year-one funding needed, you come up with $1.5 million in total expenditures. Here's the deal, $1.5 million is the real alternative to Dakota Golf's $750,000. I hope this helps shed some light on where you are tonight. You're faced with a difficult decision. City Administrators have pushed you to the brink once again, demanding that you accept something you don't want or like because there's no time or no options. It's time to say "no." There are always options when doing the right thing is at stake. With respect to the matter at hand, you can vote "no." You can vote "no" to put the city back on track, execute an RFP in 2020 that benefits all parties. You can vote "no" to address the fundamental unfairness of not giving the valued current contractor the first opportunity to lead the golf courses out of the Elmwood renovation that they worked so hard to bring to successful fruition. You can vote "no" to reject completely changing the way the city has looked at golf course operations at a time that the National Golf Foundation has recommended just the opposite. You can vote "no" to committing large unnecessary expenditure of public funds. In closing, I respect the time, the thought, and the effort you have shown and the vote you will cast. Regardless of the outcome, thank you for allowing me the privilege of working at the city courses for the past 30 years. I truly feel I did everything in my power to avoid being here tonight in this position. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, David. Appreciate it. Welcome.
Chuck Corkins. I spoke to you last week. I have just a couple more comments tonight. I want to be very clear that I don't think anybody in this room is lobbying against Landscapes Unlimited. They have a resume that is quite impeccable, hard to compete with probably, except for 23 years of successful management of that golf course without one complaint, not one. Seems to me there should be a reason why you put somebody out the door after that long of tenure successfully. And again, this isn't about lobbying against Landscapes Unlimited. I have a question. Well, as far as the reason why, I have never heard a reason why Dakota Golf Management should be relieved of their management contract other than some internal auditor said it was time to do an RFP. You've already heard about the timeliness of that several times. We don't need to talk about that anymore. I would like to know the reason. I think Tom Janza would like to know the reason. I think the people in this room would like to know the reason why Dakota Golf Management is not the chosen one any longer. Secondly, and you've heard a lot about this already, the study. I wasn't aware of that until today, but I'm wondering why the city spent the amount of money that they did, and I don't know what that figure is, to go 100% against the recommendation. My question would be, why did you do that if you weren't going to follow their recommendation? I think everybody in this room needs the answer to that. Thirdly, I've heard testimony about other testimony that's gone on, question and answers that have gone on through this process, recently been brought to light. Well, I'm here to tell you that in the last two weeks, last week and tonight, you're hearing testimony from a room full of people that support Dakota Golf and Tom Janza. They do not support bringing in Landscapes Unlimited as the management firm for this golf course. Again, there's no reason to do that. Not a single person has come to this podium, not one single person has come to this podium in two weeks and said one reason why they agree that Dakota Golf Management should not get that contract, not a single person. Two nights, two rooms full of people, not a single person is in agreement with what the city council has done. You're hearing testimony tonight and last week from a room full of people that you folks work for. You should think about that. You work for us. We have been here for two nights, last Tuesday and tonight, lobbying for Dakota Golf with not a single solitary person, I'm repeating myself, not a single solitary person lobbying against Dakota Golf. You're speaking and you're voting for your constituents. This is your opportunity to govern for the people that you represent. Not listening to them, and they're well represented, not listening to them is one way to govern. I don't think it's the right way. And you have an opportunity tonight to vote "no" for a good reason, and that's because Dakota Golf Management has done nothing to not have their contract renewed. Maybe 2020 is the year. I would beg of you, before you vote tonight, to think about this room full of people that disagrees with the process and what it appears is going to happen. I thank you very much for your time.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Plinus Nelson. I'm a citizen of Sioux Falls, a graduate of Washington High School. I've been here a long time, just like many of these people behind me. I'm excited to be able to be here in front of you. I've never participated in or ever stepped up in front of anyone before, but I think it's really important to say something. It's important to note that Tom Janza has been basically a city employee for 23 years, a person who was born and raised in Sioux Falls, the golf coach of O'Gorman High School, successful, kind, a good citizen, taxpayer. And the thing is, is that if you were to just perhaps go with an RFP, and maybe this isn't a case strong enough, but I hope that in the future, when you look at future RFPs that you might take into consideration in your matrix, that a person who has lived and was born and raised in Sioux Falls, South Dakota, is going to be basically kicked to the curb and have to leave the state. I don't know if that really means anything to you, but it means a lot to me. How would you feel if someone said, "I'm sorry, your business is done. You've done a wonderful job. We don't even give you a gold watch for working for the city for 23 years." That's horrible. That's really, how would you feel if that happened to you? What happens if it happened to you? I mean, we're talking about a man's life who dedicated his entire life to golf and did a wonderful job in Sioux Falls. And now you're basically kicking him to the curb, telling him, "I'm sorry, you're going to have to go out of state, and we're going to hire somebody from some other state to do this in your place." So it may not be enough to save Tom's job, but I hope in the future, please consider in your RFP matrix that you do put something about being in South Dakota as a priority. Thank you for your time.
And thank you, Kelly. Folks, anybody else? If there's anybody else who wants to speak, if you just come up to the front, we'd appreciate it. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Huthar and City Council leaders. I've really appreciated all the-
Pam, your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Phyllis Arns.
Thank you, Phyllis.
Appreciated all the comments here tonight, and I want to follow up on the lady who talked about the background of Tom Janza and his ties to the city. And what I've heard for a long time is our city leader saying, "Buy local, buy local, support your local business leaders." And now we're wanting to toss out a local business leader and bring in someone from out of state who undoubtedly is going to take a lot of that money back out of state. And so I encourage you to buy local and support our local businesses.
Phyllis, thank you very much. Thank you. Welcome.
Just got here from Sioux Falls. I don't golf and have never got on these golf courses ever before, but the process here does concern me a little bit because it is my tax money being used. I've had friends who've worked for Dakota Golf over the years and said that they do a very good job of what they do, and they do make the city a lot of money. That aside, I'm very glad that all these people have been here over the past couple weeks to see how things have been running over the past seven and a half years by using a secretive process in government and what we call is, I call, secret, secret, secret ramrod. And this is what we have here. This isn't the first time this has happened, folks. We have an administration building that was decided by one person, secret, secret, secret ramrod. Got a swimming pool that we have to subsidize $400,000 a year, in which we used a payback of a federal levy bond to pay for the swimming pool. Does a lot of people know that? Did you know that? That we took this payback from the federal government, a levy bond, that we should have used to pay off the actual levy bond, and we used it to build a pool because we went secret, secret, secret ramrod. We did the same thing with the railroad yard. Secret, 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 $27 million, $62 a square foot, got a bunch of dirty land, and the railroad still runs through our town like crazy and switched their cars four blocks away because secrets and ramrodding. That's what this is about. I couldn't care less about the golf part. Is a constant secrets and no transparency with this city council, and then ramrodded it through and handing it to them at the last minute and saying, "You have no choice but to pull out your gigantic rubber stamp and say yes." That's what we've had for seven and a half years. And tonight, I hope you do something different, just for once. Thank you.
Folks, did anybody else want to engage the council?
Bruce Daniel from Sioux Falls. Couple of weeks ago, I was up here and I talked about a movie called The Sting. I've been thinking about that movie a lot more as this project came along because we brought up The Sting during the discussion on the parking ramp, and it made me start thinking about it when we were doing the admin building. It caused, this process called three fraud investigators to sit down over the last few days and look deeper into the contract proposal. Sorry. Does it bother you that I'm up here and I'm talking and trying to bring it up? At least I'm not doing one finger sleuths this week. This RFP process is becoming a classic amateur bait-and-switch operation. The RFP process asked for something basic, and we are now seeing something convoluted designed to confuse. The classic strategy for bait-and-switch frauds such as this one appears to be is to request to buy a certain number of apples. The insider lowballs a price on apples, and then on the basis of the bid price on apples is given the bid. Then the buyer elects to buy fewer apples and some oranges at a high price, high enough to make up for their lowball price on apples, thereby ensuring the insider bidder gets selected and a lucrative profit is by overpricing the oranges that no one got a chance to bid on. How does this bid look anything like what was originally asked for? Bait-and-switch, by the way, is a federal crime. Look at this audience out here. I'm so amazingly impressed that these people all showed up here. We have worked hard to get the public to come and see what goes on in this chamber. I've put up 3,100 videos over the last few years showing what happens in this room and in other events around the city. These people are energized. They are voters, and I hope that they go to the polls this year and remember everybody who voted for this contract. There's no guarantees from Landscapes Unlimited, only as of yet, a promise to do something. Thank you.
Folks, did anybody else want to engage the council? Welcome.
My name is Thor Varden. Thank you very much for your time. First thing, I also want to echo that I'm very appreciative of the RFP process and the time that was taken and put into that. One of the things that I just wanted to point out is voting for this, that's ultimately your decision, and I have a lot of respect for that, and I'm glad that you chose to take more time to actually investigate and do the proper research to hopefully find a resolution this evening. You know, one of the things I also wanted to bring up, though, is that much like the election process, when we step in and we vote for something, each one of us is one voice, whether it's somebody out here in the most packed I've ever seen this room to this date, or it's somebody up here in front of me, we're still one voice. And so ultimately, what we've charged you with as these mini voices is to please make sure that you are listening to us. We understand you have a lot more information that we haven't seen before. You know, we understand that you're doing your best, that you're trying to communicate with us and make sure that you're doing the right decisions on behalf of the Sioux Falls. And that's great. And so if you're absolutely saying, "You know what? Yes, we like Landscapes Unlimited." Great, let's do it, and let's make sure that we're telling the public, "Here's the reason why I did it." If you are saying, "Hey, no, I don't think so. I absolutely agree with everybody that's come up to us," then say, "No, I don't agree with it. Here's the reasons why, because the public told me," or "Because I don't agree with this specific person." You know, it's about being that one voice, but then also about being that one voice for everybody that's spoken to you and working for them. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Thor. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I do have a prepared statement, but I just want to just respond to a couple things that I've heard. The first thing is, an RFP is not a suicide pact. If we had no choice and we always just had to take the recommendation, then why are we here? Then we're superfluous. This isn't about, for me, it's not about equipment negotiation. It's not about a certain person. It's not about emotion. It's not about local, and it's not about a full room. So with that, my prepared statement. Sometimes in life, there are no good options, but you have to play the cards that you're dealt, and that's where I'm at right now. This isn't about landscape. It isn't about Dakota Golf Management. I'm sure Landscapes would do a great job. Their resume speaks for itself. They're incredible. I'm sorry they're caught in the middle of this. It's unfortunate. Dakota Golf has done a great job managing the courses and served us well. This isn't even about the RFP process in general. It works. I know it does. I've been out two with them. We should trust the process, usually, but that doesn't mean we must always accept the result or that we have to approve. Otherwise, why are we here? In this specific case, my concerns are about this process, the timing, the methodology of the RFP, the major policy choice of management versus a lease being made for us, the financial implications for the taxpayer, and the contract terms. Why did we do an RFP at all? Why did we do it now, just as the Elmwood renovations were being concluded, rather than waiting as the NGF report suggests? Why did we not explore a lease option more fully? Why would we choose a management agreement when we had at least two lease options on the table? We were paying a management fee so that we can likely lose money, take the risk, and buy capital equipment when we hadn't needed to prior to the renovations. Why are we subjecting the taxpayer to likely years of operating losses, significant capital equipment investments, and large capital improvement costs? Why are we doing this when we had options that would have transferred the risk and the cost? Why are we doing this at the same time we are cutting budgets in the Parks Department in light of slowing sales tax revenue growth? Why are we obligating ourselves to buy and lease hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, of capital equipment over the next five years when our current vendor already has it or a lease proposer would have supplied it? Why are we transferring $325,000 from the 2017 Parks operating budget, which, by the way, would expire and go back to the general fund on December 31st, and we're going to encumber it somehow and transfer it into the operating account for the golf management company to buy equipment in 2018? Why are we proposing to pay a management company $75,000 a year when we had two companies, including our current vendor, willing to pay us? Why was the major policy decision to go to a management arrangement rather than a lease and change made by a committee of five with only one city councillor with no input from the policymaking bottle of this city council? Why are we here now at the last minute with no Plan B? I always remind myself that there may be additional information that will make it all make sense. Right now, I don't have that luxury of time, unfortunately. I have to make a decision based on the information I have. I have issues with the contract. However, I'm told I can't amend it. If I do it, it isn't valid because the other side has to review and sign it again. So I'm faced with a take-it-or-leave-it proposition. So be it. How do I vote for a contract with a blank page that represents the equipment we'll have to buy or lease? How does this proposal meet the stated goal in the RFP to reduce or eliminate city funding? I understand it's not just about money, but let's face it, it's a big deal. When our current operator would have paid us for the honor to run the courses, paid for the equipment, taken the risk, and has a proven track record, why are we doing this? I've been told I need to make my decision based on the contract, so I will. The contract takes the council out of the capital equipment approval process. You can minimize it, say it's about lawnmowers, but it's bigger than that. One of our few powers is the power of the purse. We're told we can see the budget before the city approves, or we can see monthly reports, or we can do an audit. That's fine, but how does that give us authority over the spending? How much spending on equipment can go on without approval or oversight? Hundreds of thousands, millions? This is a precedent. Don't fool yourself. It's not just about golf. So I've expressed my concern. I've debated this. I've challenged it, but no one wants to change it. So I'm forced into a corner. This is not about micromanaging the operator. This isn't day-to-day meddling. We approve these with all of our management contracts. We approve snowcat groomers, a great bear. We approve projectors at the pavilion. Why not here? I full well understand the consequences of my vote. I accept it and would say we were put in this position. I believe the best way forward is to undo this entire process and start over. So to that end, in the best interest of the city, I am going to move to cancel the RFP.
Second.
There's been a motion. Yes, thank you, councillor. There's been a motion. There's been a motion to cancel the RFP by Councillor Nitzert, seconded by Councillor Staley. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Starr.
I guess I would defer to Councillor Staley.
Councillor Starr.
If I could, I'd like to ask a question of Attorney Simons, if I could, and her background with the slide she shared, if that's okay. I fortunately and unfortunately have been on both sides of the courtroom with you, and I appreciate one very much, so the other not as much. But I think many in the room tonight don't know your background and where you brought your legal opinion from. So if you would share how much time you've spent at Woods and advising the school board, I don't need the whole resume, but enough so that we can understand where your legal opinion came from that you shared with us earlier.
Thank you. I've been practicing law for 31 years. I spent 23 years at Davenport Evans-Hurwood Smith. I left there in 2010 in order to do public service when I was offered the opportunity to become the Assistant Superintendent of the Sioux Falls School District and act as their inside local counsel, which I did for five years. So I have had governmental experience in assisting the Sioux Falls School Board when they had their legal issues. I am semi-retired, and I currently work for a local company part-time.
Perfect. Thank you. I just wanted to maybe follow up where we were earlier and where your legal opinion did come from. Was there anything else, now that I got you here?
Councillor, did you have a question of-
Nope, I'm done. That'll work. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Staley?
Well, first of all, I wanted to repeat what I said last week, that I am so grateful to have so many people here. I'm grateful for the people who emailed us, the people who called us, whether you supported this decision or you did not. That is what makes our city a great place to be because we all have input, and we have to be responsive to listening to that. I have talked about this RFP process many times. I think it's problematic, and I think the way we're using it in our city is problematic. We have a budget within our city council. We have budgeted money for private legal counsel, and I think this would have been, and this could be, a great time to use that because we're getting the administration's legal team, the people who are involved with the contract telling us things. I think we need to hear another viewpoint. And as we've heard from an attorney already for public testimony, there's more than one way of looking at an issue. That's why we have trials, of course. But with the RFP situation, just simply put, I'm telling, I tell citizens, this is what we're dealing with with this golf course thing. We did have a secret committee, and I don't mean that disrespectfully to the people participating, but I didn't know who was on it. I didn't know how they chose the two citizen golfers to be on it, but somehow they came together and were looking at the proposals and the proposals that I never get to see. So the question that people are saying is, "Well, Teresa, what's wrong with Dakota Golf? Why are we not using them anymore?" I can't tell them that. Again, it's just, "Trust us. This is the best company here. We've looked at all the proposals. You don't get to see them, but trust us. This is the best way to go." And I'm very uncomfortable with this. I don't think we've had enough information to go forward with anything. And then to have the implications coming at us, the nuances this week, that if we don't approve this thing, there's going to be some kind of a lawsuit. I mean, that is like absurd. How are we doing business in this community? Again, I had nothing to do with negotiating the contract. I didn't get to see the proposals, and then this thing is just thrust upon us, and we're supposed to just embrace it. I'm not going to do business that way in Sioux Falls, and I don't think the people I talk with want it done that way either. So whether, however this plays out, I just want the people to understand how this was. It's really a simple thing, and we want to do what's best for our community, and that's all I have to say.
I'm sorry to hear Tom is hospitalized, by the way. I don't know what's up, but I think I speak for all of us, and we wish him the best. Anyway, I'm going to try not to repeat myself as well. I did make a couple notes to address some of the questions I've continued to receive via email, calls, and texts over the past week, and I think I've got a couple points that are, will touch on what Councillor Nitzert's brought up. And I kind of kept asking myself throughout the week, I mean, how did we get to this point? Why are we here for this special holiday get-together this week? Is it all about the company that was selected? I think in the couple hundred emails I've received on the subject, I can probably count on one hand how many actual objections to the company that I saw. And I think maybe last week, we spent all about two minutes talking about the company in question that was offered the contract. Are we here because we have genuine concerns with the company and the process, or because negotiations were broken off for the value of equipment? If the city would have just agreed to pay the $750,000, would we be here tonight? In an open letter to Sioux Falls golfers on October 18th, after the committee made its selection, Mr. Janza himself stated that in a letter that Landscapes Unlimited is a world-class golf management and construction company, and we are confident that they will do an excellent job in their new role managing the city's courses. We will be focused on working with them to ensure the smoothest possible transition for the city and its golfers. So all seemed fine, and again, the committee, I know they had every intention to keep Dakota Golf involved, hopefully keeping their positions with them, and I have spoken with them recently, and they still would like to do that. And I have spoken with them recently, and they still would like to do that with whoever would like to retain their jobs. So anyways, things seem to be fine and at a pretty good pace until equipment negotiations were abruptly broken off. As far as the RFP program, you know, it's designed to be an organized, logical, meticulous program that gives you a system to evaluate all bidding companies based on qualifications and merit while keeping things like personal relationships and emotion. And I mean, through literally hours, as I've said before, hours and hours of evaluations, studying and interviews that lead you to a fact-based conclusion for each company interviewed. In my experience, I found it to be effective in that regard, and I know each of the committee members, they work their hind ends off following the program and giving the same consideration to each company. I take some issue in the notion that's been floated that rules and timelines were changed for some, or this committee was led blindly by the administration. Speaking for myself, anyone who looks at my voting record will see that I have been on the opposite side of this administration on a number of issues, and I'm sure this mayor can attest. And those who know me well know that being told what to do isn't one of my strong suits either. I'm sure my wife would attest, and need more than five minutes of public input to discuss that topic. If the RFP process is the issue, let's have that discussion separately and at another time. As of today, those are the rules we agreed to play by when all this started. Do we now set a precedent of just tossing it aside because some don't like the conclusions? I always kind of, this reminds me of the presidential election. The losing side last year came up, well, why is the Electoral College so important? Well, there's a long story. If you go to our country's history, the short answer is, those were the rules you played by when you signed up for the election. Everybody was clearly knew what the guidelines were, and you lost. Just because it didn't turn out the way you wanted, do we just start, let's start again? I don't know. It seems a little dangerous to me. Tonight, I would simply say I encourage a yes or no vote based on Landscape Unlimited's qualifications. And if the no votes went out based on those qualifications, then let's move on to the next step in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, first of all, there's been a number of points that have been raised here, and let me address at least four of them. And councillor Silber, I think, addressed the RFP process, but I'd just like to expand on that again a little bit. The RFP process is a logical, orderly way to select, in this case, the best company for the job. It removes bias and emotion from the equation, allowing for an objective decision. As much as we like the people we have done business with in the past as well as in the future, and let me tell you that, all three Toms involved in these proposals are good guys. This isn't about the good guys. We have a responsibility to make an objective decision on facts and not on who we know or the emotion that surrounds the issue. And believe me, this is an emotional issue. In this case, the RFP selection group was unanimous in their selection of Landscapes Management Company. I believe LMC is more than capable in their delivery, in their ability to honor the terms of this contract and will offer the best experience to the golfing public. Regarding out-of-state selection or selection of an out-of-state company to manage one of our courses, first of all, we cannot discriminate based on location. Nor should we, after all. We are interested in determining who can best serve the needs of Sioux Falls. That's what this process was about. Who is in the best position to provide the service to the citizens of Sioux Falls? LMC was good enough to design Prairie Green Golf Course. They were good enough to complete the redesign of Elmwood Golf Course. I do not recall concern about their abilities to complete either of these projects at the time. Again, we are tasked with making the best selection that we possibly can. Much has been said about equipment. Number one, I was surprised to learn that the city of Sioux Falls did not own the equipment previously. Only equipment now and into the future will resolve the issue we're currently dealing with. I had hoped that Dakota Golf would accept the proposal of having the equipment, their equipment, independently appraised, and a deal mutually agreeable and mutually fair to all could have been reached. Maybe that's still possible. I'm not sure. But this agenda item is not about equipment. It's about who can best serve the needs of the city. And once again, I believe LMC is the company that can lead us forward. Regarding the timing, would it have been nice to be dealing with this earlier than we are now, the last week of December? Absolutely. Should the process have been started earlier? Hindsight's usually 20/20. In this case, it tells us it probably should have been started earlier. But for whatever the reason, we are dealing with this now, and we must move forward with a decision, whether you're in favor of this agenda item or not in favor. You can vote yes, you can vote no. Dakota Golf has known for the past years that their contract ends at the end of this month. That has been no secret. That was a known from the time this current contract was signed. They've also known that there was not an option to renew this contract. They've also known that for years now that the contract would go out on an RFP, and it did. This has not been about past performance, but it's about delivering a good product moving forward. This choice in the RFP process, again, was not based on past performance. It's based on who can deliver the best in the future. So we are now at that point and need to move forward with making an objective, unbiased decision. I encourage my colleagues to vote no on the substitute motion made by councillor Neitzert, and I would encourage my colleagues to support this contract with LMC.
My little, my few comments are going to be very short, but I wanted to, I want to talk about a couple of things. I tried to do, as I said when I started this gig, as the mayor likes to say in politics, that what I was going to do is vote for what was right and correct for the city of Sioux Falls. Not necessarily, and this is what makes this really tough, what is, what a roomful of people may think I want, they want me to do. This is a tough one, guys, for all of us, regardless of what side we fall on. It's a tough one for all of us, believe it. All the Toms are friends of mine, and it just makes it really hard. But it comes down to the system in my book. If you want to change the system, the RFP system, which has really worked pretty well for a number of years, in fact, has reasons why the names of the people are not, are not let out to the general public, et cetera, et cetera. Don't shoot down a system that has worked well for us for so many years. If you want to change the system, go get the system changed. Go get the process changed to make it either fair or whatever you think it should be. Go do that. That's the important thing. I got to tell you, I think Sioux Falls' reputation is on the line here a little bit. Do the people in the business who are going to do business with us in the future through the RFP program, trust what's going to happen? And what these, what they, when they win, that they win? That's what I'm saying. Our reputation is here also. As much as I'd love to have, you know, both of them, both Dakota Golf and Landscapes Unlimited, come in and join up or whatever, that would be, that would be a great thing, but we can't do it. We got to choose. And it falls upon the eight of us or the nine of us, and we're going to have to make a decision. And so that's where I'm coming from. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you. I also wanted to thank everyone who's here this evening and everyone who's contacted us on both sides of this issue. I realize that, that having the number of people in the room has been, it's been very powerful for all of us. But I also want you to understand, and I think I said this last week, that public input happens more than just here. It happens on email and by text. It happens in the grocery store. It happens in my workplace. So I want you to understand that we do represent the entire community when we do these votes. The other thing that I would just remind our team or that I would encourage my colleagues is to also vote down the substitute motion. I think, the substitute motion. I think we need to stand on the resolution as it's presented. We need to make the hard decision tonight, and it is up to this group to do that. So I'd encourage you to vote no on the substitute motion.
Councillor Staley?
I just wanted to address what councillor Rolfing said about, about this RFP process. And I made the statement last week, but I spent several hours calling Aberdeen, Watertown, Yankton and Rapid City, and talked with their city attorneys. I talked with mayors. And I actually told them the scenario of our golf course situation. And I told them, told them how this RFP thing is being handled. I said, would you let your elected officials see the proposals? And they all said yes. They said, we have RFP selection committees, and we, for the most part, we trust what's going on, but if anyone ever wants to see behind the scenes, we allow them to do that. So I asked our city attorney, Karen Leonard, I sent her an email, which she has not responded to, but I'm, what I'm asking is, are they breaking state law or are we, you know, can we do this here? And that's why, again, I think we need to have some outside legal counsel helping us to understand what our rights are as city council members here when it comes to seeing all the information, so we can know that we're making the best selection. Maybe, maybe this is the best selection. I can't really say for sure, because I haven't seen the other, the other choices, the other ratings. And we could redact and white out the names of the proprietary information. We're hearing things that people won't want to do business with Sioux Falls anymore if they know that we're going to be viewing their proposals behind closed doors if necessary. But I think, I think businesses like to do business here. I don't think that we're going to just crumble up and blow away if we, we do that. But I'm just trying to point out that there is, I think, more flexibility in this whole process than we're, we're being told. So, and I would ask my colleagues to support councillor Neitzert's motion.
Councillor Vice-Chancellor.
I'd like to make a few comments. I know I had questions before and deferred my time. I am appreciative for the last week that we had. I certainly sat down and learned a lot. I'm so appreciative for all the comments and emails that you've all sent and the people that are not here that have sent those and contacted us in many different ways. One of the things that I started looking at was the timeline, to be able to justify, what does this timeline look like for us? And so I pulled the audit report from our internal audit department. For those of you that doesn't, that doesn't know what, what that is, we have an independent department to help the city achieve the highest efficiency effectiveness with integrity, to be highly respected service division and a catalyst for positive change. They go on to list some other functions that they do. They have an audit committee in which they report to as well. And so pulling that, back in 2008, there were some recommendations made when an audit was done of our golf management company. We recommend that a request for proposal be prepared, advertised near the end of the current agreement to determine if there are any interested management companies beside Dakota Golf Management willing to perform the service to the city. That was done in 2008. We started talking about this process in 2008. This is not a secret of when we started the process. That was not done. At that time, it says, this could be taken into consideration during the next option to renew based on performance of the Dakota Golf Management. We are not aware of any contracts by other parties inquiring or about or requesting to submit a proposal to manage the courses. Okay? 2008. So 2014 comes along and they do an audit report. Again, this was in December of 2014. The agreement was amended December 29th, 2014, to extend the management contract for two additional years until December 31st, 2017, at which time the city plans to put the contract out for RFP requests for proposals. This amendment was executed to address the current renovations being performed at Elmwood Golf Course and the resulting changes in revenue sharing. So that was done in 2014, then pushing it back yet again. In April of 2017, there was an email sent from Director Kearney, I believe it was, stating the intentions of the RFP. All the while, all these things were also commuted with, communicated with Dakota Golf. I'm not sure how we have gotten to the point of Dakota Golf or Landscape. I'm not sure how we got here, because that's not the RFP process. The RFP process comes in and does a scoring of, maybe financials on one RFP is way higher than something else, maybe it's not. Each one has a scoring mechanism that is all kept and weighted based on whatever it is identified, which is made to the public and is listed on our city website. I know that was read last week by councillor Silber. And so I'm a little confused how we got here. Last week, we sat here and heard a bevy of testimony, all very good, all very emotional. I know this has been really hard on all of us as well as the public. It is emotional, and I certainly am sensitive to that. But not one of us talked about Landscapes. Not one of us talked about their qualifications. Not one of us talked about who this company is. That won unanimously two times, and that was recommended. And so that's, that's where I'm not sure. Where I did have some questions and where I think that we can learn some lessons is not dumping a contract at 5:00 on our laps, not wait till the end of the year. All things I've communicated privately, and I'll say it again here tonight, very frustrating for us to have to read a 100-page report over the weekend. I know what I signed up for. I'm not complaining at all. However, if you want us to make the decisions with the most time in mind, we've got to do a better job at that. We just have got to do a better job. If there's changes that need to be made in the RFP process, we need to look at doing that. We need to see how we can make that process better. But the last time I checked, when you start a ballgame, you don't change, you don't change in the beginning, in the middle of a game. You don't change the rules in there. Sure, you can vote to stop the RFP. You can do that. I wouldn't suggest it. That's an option we have today. And at no time has anyone told me I have to vote for this contract. No one has told me that. I have the ability to make that decision for what I think is best for the whole city. It is emotional. I'm very thankful and grateful for you all being here. I'm confused at the email that I received on October 18th from Mr. Janza conceding and congratulating Landscapes, saying what a great job they're going to do, and we're so excited, we can't wait to work. Where that broke down, I'm not quite sure either. It's somewhere along the lines of negotiating for equipment. And I know that's not our job about the equipment, to negotiate that. That has to be done on good faith. The idea that this was given to the company and said, hey, let's find some independent folks, let's give the appraisal. If you don't like my number and I don't like your number, we each get to pick somebody and go from there. That was off the table right away. And for that, I'm a little bit frustrated as well, is let's get a third party to look at that equipment, evaluate it. What is it worth? What can we do with it? So I'm grateful for that. I'm sorry I'm going over my time. I've got one more thing I want to say. The other issue that I struggled with, with part of this contract, was the council oversight. I worked very, I ran into city employees at the grocery store and said, I'm going to email you back. Don't worry, I've got some ideas what we can do. And so what I'm talking about is the relationship between the council, Landscapes, the city, our internal auditors and those other audit mechanisms we have and safeguards. This next contract is stronger, has more oversight, maybe not 100% to my liking, however, I do have a firm verbal commitment and written commitment from finance as well as Parks Department, that they will continue to have that oversight, continue to have the internal auditor come in on an annual basis, if that's what the audit chair sees fit, and have that oversight and accountability to the city council as well as the community. And you know, there's some additional changes possibly coming that we'll look at, not to talk about today, because at the end of the day, today, we are talking about, is Landscapes the best for this golf contract? So I ask you to vote against the substitute. So I ask you to vote against the substitute motion at this time. Thank you.
Counselor, I'm going to ask for us to vote on the substitute motion and then we'll continue the dialogue if there's additional dialogue. I think that's fair and I think it's prudent. So there was a motion made by Counselor Nicer, and I think it was seconded by...
Counselor Staley.
By Counselor Staley. And if you could just read that substitute motion.
It was a motion to cancel the RFP.
A motion to cancel the RFP. So a roll call vote on the motion to cancel the RFP.
Council members Erickson?
No.
Urbanbuck?
No.
Kylie?
No.
Nicer?
Yes.
Rolfing?
No.
Selberg?
No.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
That has failed three to five. Counselor Staley?
I was just going to ask, Mr. Walsh, did you still want to come up and say something?
Just one question. Is there an out? Should the contract not perform as you hope? Can you end it if it doesn't hit the goals?
Thank you, Tom. Counselor Mott?
Could I ask Attorney Leonard to remind us what that might be in terms of if there were an issue with the, with the way the contract is performing? Does the city have an out or are we stuck for five years?
Thank you, Counselor Urbanbuck and Mr. Walsh. The contract does have a termination provision in it. There is an opportunity to cure and if Landscapes does not cure the breach within 30 days, then we do have termination rights. I would also refer to our outside counsel, Greg Greenfield, who drafted the contract if you want anything expounded on.
Thank you.
Counselor Starr?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
I think the question tonight seems to be, how did we get here? We got here by not listening to these people. The RFP process is not inherently bad. They worked very hard with the parameters that were given to them. The problem with the RFP process in this case is the beginning part, the scope of work. And yes, Mr. Rust, I was listening the night or the afternoon that you did the presentation for us. It's the direction and policy decisions that we made or didn't make to give to the RFP committee. They sat down with a set of rules and a set of guidelines and they went through that process. We didn't talk to the Parks Board about what they wanted to see, whether it's a management agreement or a lease agreement. They didn't have discussions about that. We didn't have discussions about that policy moving forward. We didn't even look at the National Golf Foundation report and the recommendations they made. I sat here back in August and I asked Director Kearney about where we were going. And the response I got was, well, we'll see what we get when the proposals come in. Well, how do we set policy for our city? And the bottom line, what we're trying to do is, and what I'm trying to do, is protect public access to our golf courses, to keep them affordable for the playing public. There was a great email that we all got this afternoon that talked really distinctly about how Prairie Green got expanded and Mayor White and, and that whole process that really struck home for me. But the bottom line is, if we don't give the public an opportunity to be part of this process, whether it's at the Parks Board level, whether it's here second night, that's why we're here tonight. We're not here because we're arguing about the course and things, but we're, we're not listening. We're not listening to what our constituents are telling us. And that's why I'm going to vote against this. I'm going to go with what the consultant, National Golf Foundation, talked to us about in 2020. And again, if Director Turbeck would have been here with that explanation back in June before we started this process, that he went with us tonight, talking about the differences between a management agreement and a lease agreement, we'd have been in a whole different spot tonight. Again, we wouldn't be here because we would have been read into the process when it began. It was probably the best explanation since I've been on the council for Director Turbeck to tell us exactly where we're heading, where we need to go. But we needed that back at the time when we were doing the scope of work, not when we've already negotiated a contract and gotten to this point where, you know, we've taken a good company with several good companies and not knowing the process and not knowing what happened. But the bottom line is, we got to work on the scope of work process and being read into that so we understand the process before the process starts. So we don't get to the end and complain that we weren't included in the process and these folks weren't included. And it becomes more rational. And again, I really believe the people who served on the RFP committee followed exactly what they were supposed to do. They followed the guidelines that they were given and they did what they were supposed to do. We just didn't get to weigh in on the front end before they got to that criteria and we're barely weighing in on the back end on the contract. So, thank you.
Counselor Sulu, authorizing the mayor to enter into a golf course management agreement between the city of Sioux Falls and Landscapes Management Company, LLC. A roll call vote, please.
Counselor members Erickson?
Excuse me. Counselor Nicer wanted to say something. He had his finger up?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
No.
Just very quickly, I will just finish, I just want to make clear, for me, it wasn't about the equipment negotiation. That's a sideshow. For me, it was just a principle of management versus the lease agreement. I just disagree with the risk proposal in good faith. I thought if we canceled the RFP, we could start over and find a new methodology. I just think that the methodology was wrong. It's not an indictment of the entire RFP process. And I, the other thing I do want to say before we vote, because it may go, I think, I may know the direction it's going, I want to be really clear for me, if this passes, I believe Landscapes is going to do a great job and I'll give them my full support. We debate policy and we move on.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. A roll call, Counselor. A roll call vote, please. On the main motion, folks.
Counselor members Erickson?
Yes.
Urbanbuck?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nicer?
No.
Rolfing?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Starr?
No.
Staley?
No.
That has passed five to three. Counsel, any other business?
Move to adjourn.
Point of personal privilege, if I could.
Sure, Counselor Rolfing.
I have my daughter in the audience from Philadelphia who came down to see how city government works, along with my niece from, from Utah and a niece's daughter from Florida. And I want to recognize that they're here.
Welcome, Rolfing family. Welcome. There is my motion to adjourn. All those that favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned, so follows. Make it a great night.